Can we all rise to the pledge, please? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Schwartz?
Here.
Trustee Clements?
Here.
Trustee Hammond?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
Welcome, everybody. It's so nice to have so many faces in our audience. I want to say two quick things. The first thing is a big congratulations to our graduates. What a lovely day in ceremony we had on Saturday. And congratulations not just to our graduates, but to our faculty, to our staff, and to our parents, and community for all working together in getting our kids there. And the other thing I just wanted to note, I was thinking about this as a board, I was thinking about how each of us are parents, and that's not really something that happens all the time in school districts, actually. It doesn't always happen here, but for this moment, everybody on the board currently is a parent of a Haldane student, and I think that's kind of special. And I just wanted to say that there's parents, you know, transitioning with everybody here. You know, we've got Peggy Clements and Margaret Parr, both have students graduating. Julia Famularo has a student graduating. Laura has a student moving into high school. My student survived kindergarten. And Evan's holding down the fort with some high school students as well. So I was thinking about all of us kind of transitioning with the community, and I wanted the community to know that we're all there with you. And we know what goes on in the families and in the homes, so. Okay, that's what I wanted to say. We've got a lot to do today, a lot of really positive stuff, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bowers to lead our recognition of retirees and tenured teachers.
So we have six people that we're going to honor this evening. Once I do my first introduction, I will ask the principals to share the magical work of the people that are working with them. But I'm going to start by wishing Brian Onwell. And for those of you who may not know, after nine years of being the high school principal, Brian has accepted a position in the district office at the Osning School District as the secondary...
Teaching and learning director.
Director of secondary teaching and learning. And he will be missed, and he's done a remarkably wonderful job for us. But it's time. He's ready, and it's the point in his life where he needs to move to the next step. So although we're sad, we're also happy for him. We wish him well, and we would like to recognize him. So thank you, Brian. She has a little flower for you. So best of luck to you. Okay, so I guess we're going to ask Brent to say some words of fond farewell to our teachers and our teaching assistants who are heading into the next stage of their life.
Okay. So Ms. Kroner, Gail, where do I begin? Five years ago, I'm a new principal here at Haldane, new to the community, right? I have the task of absorbing this staff that I've inherited, right? Sizing people up, getting a sense of, you know, what I'm in for, what I'm in store for, you know. And, you know, initially, Gail, you know, you're not quite sure how to read, Gail. You know, I was kind of like, you know, should I be scared here? Might I get yelled at? But I'm... We've had such a wonderful relationship, and, you know, I've... Gail is the great sage of our elementary school. You know, she is that staff member who is so genuinely and rightly respected by her colleagues, by me as her principal. I've always so much appreciated that Gail is so level-headed and able to really engage in conversations that can be challenging conversations for other people, and do it with tact and with professionalism, and be able to navigate those sensitive topics where we may not necessarily agree, but we certainly have a respect for each other. And it's been just a complete honor to work with you, your colleagues, you know this, think incredibly highly of you. The partnership that you've had with so many colleagues through your career, you know, says so much about the work that you've done, which has always been in the best interest of kids. So we are going to miss you, Gail. I'm going to miss you deeply. I really appreciate your support, your professionalism, and please come back and visit. We miss you. And Celia Thomas. Let's see. We talk a lot, right, in education about intrinsic motivation, right? Kids not being motivated by some sort of external reward, right, and really being intrinsically motivated. And I was thinking a lot about that today when I was thinking of Celia and her desire and willingness to take on the role of overseeing our elementary library, because that's a position that really required someone to step into that position and really be intrinsically motivated and have the passion and the creativity to work with students in that capacity. There's no question that Celia is a love, has a love for literature, for children's literature. I've always been impressed with, after a day of teaching in the library, that after dismissal, often Celia's there picking up our students, some of our students, to then in turn supervise and babysit them for after-school hours. And, you know, I think her colleagues, they captured it best, Mr. Papparo, when he really spoke about Celia's heart and the compassion and the heart that she has that is just, permeates everything that she does. And we're going to miss you. We wish you well in retirement and on this next chapter. Congratulations.
Every lady's favorite, a carnation, right?
Okay, Brian, or for Joanne?
Yeah. So I have Joanne Larisse. Joanne, if you know Joanne, or if you don't, you didn't even have to know her, if you just take a look over here, you see that with that bright, beautiful smile will just disarm anybody, any human being on the planet, right? And so what a more perfect population for her to work with than adolescents and high school students. And you just will not find a kinder, gentler soul. Last year, I did a graduation speech around this phrase or this sign that Ms. Sniffin has in her office, "Because nice matters." I think that Joanne really is the embodiment of that phrase, and she has this disarming effect on students on a daily basis. It doesn't matter what kind of crisis they're in, or what kind of day they're having, as she's accompanying them through their day, it just completely brings them down to their roots and to their level, and gets them immediately grounded just by her, you know, visual presence and beautiful smile, and also just her kind, calm tone. So we're really, really lucky to have had her working with our kids on a daily basis, and it's going to be a tough, in the spiritual world of positivity in the building. We got to make sure that we fill that right back up in her absence. So congratulations, Joanne, and thank you so much for working with us and supporting our kids on a daily basis. And if you're wondering where that beauty comes from, do you see, her mom is 97, sitting right there. Let's give her a round of applause.
We have two others for you to share some great news. We have...
It's time for tenure.
It's time for tenure. We have two of our superstars.
Switching gears, right? And so this amazing tradition, we had a lot of traditions this spring, new ones, and ones that we've made sure that we've upheld. But one of the coolest traditions here at Haldane is the annual passing of the torch, right? So we very purposely choose to join these two different farewells and welcomes as if bookends, right, of a ceremonial passing the torch. So as retirees go, we congratulate our tenurees for becoming, you know, full-time and permanent members of our staff. So first, I want to say a few words about Melissa Seidman. And Melissa really has revolutionized the senior experience, senior, not senior citizen experience, the senior year of high school, right? There is a bit of a prescribed curriculum that comes with that, with the government, politics, and economics, and it can be very stale and something that, you know, seniors are just already have one foot out the door, and they're just not looking forward to. And Melissa has really truly made that an authentic year for students, where they're out interviewing professionals. I've never had more Skype sessions in a given year. She's got authors of books, professional historians, PhDs, and folks that are like the premier in their craft, always in the classroom, and then our kids out there working with them. So, you know, I want to read a few things to you, just to give you an idea of how impressive her tenure even thus far has been. But she's always constructing these student-centered lessons that promote what we call 21st century skills. She took over this program called Pathways to Success, where we bring all of the talents and experiences of this community, all the amazing folks that we have in this community, we bring them into our school. She took that over, and it has just blossomed. We've had, how many speakers do we have, 32 or something this year? It's incredible how much our ninth graders have been exposed to that, and our upperclassmen as well. So Pathways to Success, she revitalized our senior internship experience. This year, we had over 50% of our senior class participate in a senior year internship. She served as SAT and ACT coordinator. She really embodies this idea of professional development among teachers. She leads an SS Chat, which is a Twitter, like a 21st century way of teachers engaging one another's in discussion. She's a regular leader on that forum, and has really presented nationally at conferences with all of these kind of progressive ideas and techniques. And then another accolade, and I could go on and on, but really one of the most interesting ones is, when I first arrived about nine years ago, there was a tremendous concern, and with good reason, before the, you know, the crash of the real estate market, there was this big concern about, are students graduating financially literate, right? There was a very big push on the board for that. We looked at our curriculum very closely, and with the exception of business math as one of our courses, we really weren't doing a great job of that. And Melissa really has turned that in 100% the opposite direction, and now we're what's called a Wise Financial Literacy Gold Star Certificate School for the last two years. So students actually test, take a test to determine how financially literate that they are, that, you know, they will never be ripped off in life, or they can manage a checkbook, and they can go get a car loan, and do all these things. So that's just really a sampling of all the amazing things that Melissa's done thus far. And I got to tell you, she's just a motivator of kids and a solid example for them to follow. So thank you so much. We're lucky to have you and glad that we found you. Congratulations, Melissa. Mr. Hoolen, I have to just deviate from the script on this one. He leads our Blues Devils jam band, right? And he's a drummer. And, you know, his probably banner moment of the year was like, "Brian, would you believe that they let me play drums with them?" You know, he's just... And then every now and again, you'll see him throw this up, right? And I'm like, he's thinking to himself, "Wow, I can't believe I have a principal that will do this with me," right? And I keep, and I'm saying in my head, "I can't believe I found a math genius that does this." So that is really the essence of our relationship, and really, I think it captures what's so special about Christian. He teaches Algebra I, Algebra II, modeling the world with math, a course that he kind of co-wrote with our department chair, and he was responsible for getting it off the ground. It's one of our most highly subscribed, rigorous math electives that caters to a full range of students. And also Intro to Calculus. Again, back to that same thing, Christian is a chemical engineer by trade, and then, I don't know if you know anything about engineering and consulting world, but very early in his career, he went from chemical engineering to consulting, which is kind of like, you know, getting your PhD immediately, and, you know, I think in the business world, isn't that kind of what it's like to go into consulting? And his first year, he says to me like, "Wow, I can't believe you're going to let me teach calculus in my first year." And again, I'm thinking in my head, "I can't believe that you don't know that you're a math genius who's going to teach calculus for us." So it's been fantastic all along. He's taken advantage of every single staff development opportunity. He is an absolute perfectionist, sometimes to a fault, and is learning to understand the human process that is teaching. And he, as I mentioned before, is the advisor to the Blues Devils, and he just has the most positive relationships with students, high expectations, and, you know, rigorous class activities on a daily basis. So again, just like Melissa, we're really, really lucky to have you, and we look forward to a nice, long, and distinguished career at Haldane. Congratulations.
Okay, a lot of positive and happy news tonight. We would... Please?
I just wanted to, just a quick comment. First of all, congratulations to the retirees and for the tenured people, because I worked with Melissa. Melissa brought students down to my school this year, and we worked really well, and congratulations, you deserve tenure. Brian has actually shared with us a lot of her lesson plans and her unit plans. And for someone who is familiar with that type of stuff, that's like in the top, what she's shown up, what we've seen is like in the top 1% of quality that you could see from a teacher. So congratulations on your tenure. And for Mr. Hoolen, I know you had one of my kids, I'm embarrassed, I don't remember which one, okay?
Oh.
Okay, but she loved you, and they're both looking forward to being in your class next year. So congratulations. And for Brian, I was on Brian's hiring committee. I was the board rep at the time, and as soon as Brian walked out that door, as soon as that door shut, boom, we all looked at each other, and we knew we found the candidate. So it was instant connection. And just what you've done for this district is, I'm sure you're getting tired of hearing it, okay, but what you've done for this district is just extraordinary. You really, you know, and it's gone K through 12, even though you're a 9th through 12 principal, somehow it's resonated across the entire school district. And what you've done, you put Haldane on the map, and you've just done an incredible job, and congratulations.
So now if we can take a few minutes, oh, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay. A few minutes, we have a little celebration next door, and come over, have a cupcake and something to drink, and celebrate our retirees, our tenured teachers, and our friend who is moving on to the next part of his career. So come on next door.
So we're going into Mr. Twardy's solar project update. It's time.
I better put the microphone down here. Cecilia's going to yell at me. Oh, there we go. Good evening, and tonight I'm going to be doing two presentations, one a monolith solar project, and the other one's going to be on parking. But I figured I'd start with the monolith solar project analysis. And what I'm looking to do here is just to show you the comparison between having monolith solar with us and also the numbers if we did not have monolith solar. So in other words, to show you the savings that we're getting by using monolith solar. There's a couple important facts that I would like to preface this analysis with. First of all, a lot of questions are about when we started generating electric. And the DO and bus garage was the first building that, wow, they worked on, and that was done in the beginning of July of 2015. The high school sometime around the first week in September of 2015. And then the elementary and middle school was not until mid-December. We had to put a new transformer in there, and then we had to get some permits. So we didn't even generate any power until December from the main building. At this point, we really don't have enough data to give a complete analysis for a full year, so take that into consideration. And the months that we are analyzing are also not the most productive months for solar. The most productive months are going to be June, when we, June 21st, well, that's today. Today was our most productive day. And so I just want you to keep in mind that we also are judging this on months that were not very good for generation. Okay, and just to show that to you. The graph, all the way over on the left, that's December, and it goes to June. So you can see each month, we're generating a little bit more. This is the district office. And you'll see that June is lower, but that's because we still have a third of the month left. This was all done June 19th. So I'm going to show you the next two, the next two buildings. And as you can see, they all follow the same path. So that just shows you the generation. Now, here, this is a chart that we have that is going to show you where our savings come from. Also to let you know that the first bill did not come until February 1st, and so we didn't have any bills to base anything on until that point. But they gave us a bill coming from the beginning, from July 1st. Remember, all the buildings weren't generating on July 1st, so it's a little tricky there. As you can see, the biggest bill for each month is, the first one is going to be in the January bill, the one we received in February. The rest will be a little bit smaller, but like I said, that's because that was from July. Okay, this first column is the amount of kilowatt-hours that we used here at Haldane for each different building. The first one was the high school, then we have the main building, and then we have the DO and bus garage. The next column is what we use from Central Hudson. The next column is what we use combined and what it cost us. And the column between the colored bars is an estimate of what would it cost us if we did not have solar. So instead of going through every number individually, for the high school, for example, these are all the numbers that we saved if we had, if we had not used, I mean, that we did use solar. All the way down at the bottom, we saved a total of $2,076 so far with these couple of months. I do want to reiterate that we are guaranteed savings of 25% of what we produce. We're supposed to produce around 349,000 kilowatt-hours, so we're going to be saving 60% of that. And it just goes to show that we are saving money. This was no taxpayer dollars. And at the end of the year, we'll have a better idea of exactly how much we saved. But again, it's green energy, it did not cost the district, and it does show that we are saving money. Okay? Oh, I got one more.
Can we just pause before you do the parking, just see if there's any questions about the solar project or solar update?
Any questions?
I mean, I'm actually a little unclear on what you said. Maybe you can just repeat it for me. So I know that the total savings that we have so far is $2,076.
Correct.
Which is great. Then you said that we are guaranteed savings of 25% of something?
Of what we produce for the course of the year. We're going to be producing 349,000 kilowatt-hours, so monolith solar will bill us on that part at a guaranteed reduction in 25% of the rates of what Central Hudson would have paid us for that.
But a different way of kind of couching it is that it's, we're going to be, the measurement that we're using is about 60% of our electric bill. And they've guaranteed that of that 60%, we will save 25%.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, now's when we're going to see, as a matter of fact, if you look at this number right here for the DO, we already are producing more electric there than we use, because they have zero for us in that. See that? And so we're already headed that way. The next couple of months, we're going to be producing more and not getting charged anything with Central Hudson.
And something else we spoke about throughout the process was trying to find ways to incorporate educational opportunities for our students. Has that happened yet? Is that in the works?
It has not happened with monolith coming down yet, but they're a phone call away. I have personally taken some of the classrooms out myself, and actually brought them on the roof, and showed them, and explained to them, and went over the monolith PowerPoint presentation. So we did include it with some of Simon Duder's classes, and also Josiah Papparo's classes. We have started some education with them there.
There is a measurement that they can get to online that talks about the degree days and the amount of kilowatt-hours produced and...
Correct.
So I think that's what you're, it's available to our students.
Right, but I guess we were talking about trying to find ways to like incorporate it into their, into their science classes, into lesson plans. And I know that that shifted a bit after, we were originally talking about a farm, and that was a little different, because they could really walk through there and be in it, and they're on the roofs, and you know, we don't really need to have children on the roofs that often. But so I know that the opportunities maybe has shifted a little bit, but just wondering if...
But they can certainly track the amount that we're producing, and the amount of kilowatt-hours we're saving, the carbon footprint, all of that is part of it.
Yes, if we go online, anybody that wants any of the information could always email me how they can get online and get all this information. It's really a very nice website, and it shows graphs of what we're saving dollars-wise. It shows graphs of kilowatt-hour-wise, what we're producing, how many trees we saved, et cetera.
Will there be a link to it from the new website?
There was for a while, and if anybody wants to go on it, it's locus, L-O-C-U-S, energy.com. And there's different ways to get onto each building. For example, the high school is just high school.
Yeah, you had given us these, I think, a few meetings ago, like, they're pretty...
Yeah.
But I think we should, we should ask Leah to find a place for it, so people can link into it. So as we get the new website up and coming, up and going in July. So that can be something, if you don't mind making sure that she has that information.
Great. And I mean, it seems, given how much data is available, it seems like there should be, I mean, it may take a little while, but there should be opportunity. I mean, I think, I think what I hear Mike saying is there, the data, the data's there, the information's there, and for it to happen, it will, I think, will probably to some extent up to the teachers to develop the lessons for that. And, you know, I think that there are a lot of opportunities for it, like, you know, I'm thinking data, for example, you know. But yeah, it's great.
But they may not know what's there, too.
I know.
So we're going to have to figure out, maybe on the superintendent's conference day, we can give them a brief tutorial, and/or maybe in faculty meetings, so they know how to get to it and what's there, and they can decide what would be the name.
And this might be more appropriate, you know, everything's up and running, and that would be great.
Quick question, Mike. Do you continue to produce electricity during July and August?
Yes. Oh, yes. Those will be good months for us, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Parking.
Okay, welcome to our parking PowerPoint. This is parking at Haldane, and talk about some of the problems and solutions, and overall, it's turning out to be... it's turning out to be a very positive subject also. My agenda will be first steps, then we'll go into initial solutions, then our follow-up, and then looking ahead. With the first steps, we met with the Village Parking Committee of Coal Spring to hear some concerns, and Dino and myself went to the Village Parking Committee meeting. The public and the committee shared concerns about Mountain Avenue and Locust Ridge with us and some of the congestion out there. And there was people from the public and the committee, and we gathered some information from them. Then we went to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and we invited Anthony Phillips. He's the ex-mayor of Coal, Village of Coal Spring. He came there, and he's also in charge of the parking committee for the village. And he shared some more of his concerns to the Buildings and Grounds Committee and talked about possible things that we could do. We also had a parking audit done by Deputy Paul Piazza. I walked around him earlier in the year. Thank you, thank you very much. And we found seven extra spots, and we converted a lot of those into visitor parking up here and made some substitute teacher parking. And as a result of our first steps, Dr. Bowers had a meeting, called a meeting with Officer George Kane, he's the officer in charge for Coal Spring, and Deputy Piazza and myself, and we discussed some of the comments that people had said at some of these meetings to find out which direction we should head into. So the initial solutions, what we found, oops. What we found out is, one of the problems is too many people are dropping, stopping and parking out on Mountain Avenue in illegal places. There's a lot of congestion from high school parking. And we figured that a better way to keep some of the traffic flow out of there, and people said that we should maybe incorporate the circle up here more. We found out that people didn't wanna use the circle because there was a lot of congestion trying to get back out on Route 9D. Okay? What did we do to combat that? We have, Deputy Piazza goes out on 9D every morning now, and he's now keeping the flow of traffic going, and the traffic's going real well. We went from having maybe a 10 to 15-minute wait, 'cause the traffic was backed all the way up to the cafeteria here at times, to now people are getting right out. We also keep some of our maintenance staff, and mostly Gary Vannaselt, up here in the circle during the same time period. So now, when cars are coming up, some are dropping off for middle school, some are diverting up to the high school. And Gary keeps the traffic flowing in the right direction, making sure that two cars aren't going at the same time, one to the high school, one pulling out from the middle, and keeps that safe. So we also have an increased Coal Spring police presence on Mountain Avenue, and I have noticed that myself. They're out there now making sure that everybody's parked illegally. Nobody is parking in those yellow striped-off areas that we have, we can't have cars here, 'cause the buses won't be able to get around safely there and maneuver that area. So the Coal Spring police have been out there a lot, and every time I go out there, they are out there. We've also increased the parking, some visitor parking up there at the district office. We have signage out there showing that it is visitor parking. We talked about this at the last board meeting. It makes me feel good, 'cause since that time, I see, that lot is filled every day, and it's being used. And it is, that little bit does help. We used to have, that's Cedar, Cedar Street for people that don't know. Initially there, there used to be two cars just parked parallel. Now we're parking vertically from the street, and six cars do fit there. Our follow-up. After incorporating all these immediate changes, Dr. Bowers had called another meeting with Anthony Phillips, Deputy Piazza, Officer in Charge Kane, myself, and Ann Dino, just to meet and review the changes and to see how everything was going, get some feedback. And what we found out was very positive at that meeting. Anthony Phillips initially said, "Mike, I'm coming up the circle now. I could drive and I can go right out. No more waiting." He says it's fantastic. He suggested that we educate the public to that, maybe toward the end of the summer, send out a letter just to let them know that the circle is now a better option to use. So that's what we're gonna do toward the end of the summer. It's increased safety, it's increased efficiency. Now, we're all working together. We have this co-committee, and we're working together with the village. We're working together with our own people. And it seems to be really good. Looking ahead, one of our goals is to create more parking to help alleviate the congestion on Mountain Avenue, 'cause that's where all the problems seem to come from. So what we're, whoop. Sorry. Wrong button. What we're trying to do here is, during the summer, we're gonna be putting additional parking up on this red area. That's behind, that's the high school. This is the high school parking lot. And this area up here, we're gonna add item four up there, and that'll be 20-plus spots, probably about 25 spots. That's the blue area where we already added the four spots. And down the road, we're also talking about, this is the area right below the Bell parking lot, and we're talking about putting some more spots in there. So we are identifying other areas on the campus. So the next thing that we wanna do looking ahead also is to keep monitoring the situation, what we've done, what we're going to do, how it's working out, and also to stay in contact with the village people. I actually blew that one, I'm sorry. So all in all, this has been a very positive thing. We've had a lot of information from a lot of people. We're moving on, we're heading in the right direction, and it'll just get better. Any questions?
Those parking spaces behind the high school, those are gonna be for students? Are they gonna be specific for students?
For seniors, and there'll be a lottery, and then we'll have to decide how, but they're, they need to be eligible. There'll be a requirement for grade, point average, and discipline, and all the other things that go along with it. It's gonna be a gift for those kids and...
Right. So it'll be just seniors, or seniors and juniors?
Probably just seniors. It depends on how many apply. And if we have any spots left over, we'll figure out what to do with them at that point.
And then, has the, the people that came in and complained, have we sent them notes saying, "This is what we're doing, and this is where we're going"? Just so, I think they'd be really appreciative.
Well, actually, we're gonna have a meeting. We're setting up a meeting, I think, over the summer with, we've invited them in. And so that's, that's gonna be the next thing, to see if they're, you know, how things are working with them and where we're going, and if we have any additional things. But yes, we have been in contact, and we will have, we're having a meeting.
I also have had some comments from some of the neighbors on Mountain Avenue who said things have been much better.
Good.
So I haven't, we haven't had, at least I haven't heard of any complaints in the last month or so, and that's a big step.
Well, it changes during, during the end of the school year, 'cause those kids are in and out at weird times.
Yeah.
So the real true test will be September.
Yep, when we get back.
Well, I'll say, I mean, as somebody who deals with, who's at the elementary school pickup drop-off time all the time, I really, I've noticed a big difference. I feel like the, the police are there, I would say, almost every day, if not every day, often. And I think just having them there allows, you know, just gives people pause, to be like, "Oh, let me make sure I'm parking in the right place." And I've witnessed the, and been a part of that, that 7:30 drop-off with Deputy Piazza and the Coal Spring police out there directing traffic, and it's real smooth. And I spoke to the crossing guard that's always at that 9D intersection, Tom, and I asked him how it was going from his perspective. I was like, "You're the expert. Like, you're here every day, and you see all this traffic." And he had really positive things to say. He just said, "My job," it's made his job a lot easier and his job a lot safer. So from my perspective, I feel like the shifts have really, they're really working. And I think, I mean, I'd love to hear what Laura thinks, having been on the committee, but from my perspective, I feel like it's working, and a big thank you to all of you who've found ways to work together with the, with the village.
That's the best part.
I mean, that's the best part. We're all just neighbors, trying to be good neighbors and making it work, and that's really great.
The co-committee has worked out fabulously.
Fantastic.
So I have the same reaction that Jen has. I think things are going relatively smoothly. In the beginning, there were a couple of kinks, and I think we can expect that to happen, right? So maybe come September again, there may be a few more kinks, but we'll get it all worked out, I'm sure. And thank you again for reaching out, and again, it goes to all work together. That's what's...
So it might be, like, there might be an opportunity for some communication for the fall for parents of saying, "Okay, just a reminder, the drop-off at 9D is now really super smooth, so please feel free to use it." I was also thinking it might be beneficial to remind parents what the crossing guard's jobs are. Something I learned along the way is that they're there to help the kids cross, not the parents. Like, that's actually their job, isn't, they're not allowed to help the parents. So I'll walk across in the morning with the kids, and I get the stop sign, but on my way back, I do not get the stop sign. But that's not their job. And I think that that's interesting. Like, I mean, I think the public should, should know what their job is and...
I didn't know that either.
Yeah. People, they've gotten the evil eye from people, but that's really, that's not their job. They're not allowed to do that. So just some, some information, I think, in the fall would be a good time, and where people can park and the new parking spots and...
Sure. Maybe right before school starts, I think, is probably.
In the packet, yep.
I think we're well on the way. Once the parking spots up are in the high school, that's gonna even be that much better.
Yeah.
A question about the parking. So who, like, is that, are we gonna do that? Are we gonna get a company to do that?
You mean for the 25 spots?
Yeah.
No, that's gonna be, we'll be doing that, but I wanna wait until Mr. Crouchy's on board before he, you know, I want him to be involved in the decision-making that goes there.
Is there a cost? Like, is there, is that a big cost issue? That, is that gonna come out of the current...
That was one of the items on the Buildings and Grounds Committee that was presented initially. Sure, it's already counted for.
Yeah.
So it's already in the budget for this year's budget, in the maintenance budget? Is that what it says?
Yes, we already, we have the budget in, and we're gonna put item four. We're not paving.
Right.
So we're just gonna clean it out, put item four, and we're putting a fence that will go along the back and to the sides, because we don't wanna allow access to the, to the woods.
Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody.
The, the village people might want, wait, Mike. Well, I was gonna say, the village people are gonna want you as a new recruit.
Okay, Evan, I mean, he has a, he's, are you finished or...
No, I, I said, the village people are gonna want him as a new recruit.
That's right. I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. So moving into the superintendent's report.
So do you mind with our principals here, maybe since we're only having two reports tonight?
Yeah, sure.
Julia's at the eighth-grade dance, and Chris is with her. Ellen is at her stepson's moving up ceremony. So we have two people here that maybe they can give their quick report. Oh, you have additional information you're gonna give to them? Okay. Three people here, and, and then they can go home, so if you don't mind.
Mr. Harrington, would you like to start?
Okay, terrific. Moving up ceremony tomorrow, 12 o'clock. Get to celebrate our graduating fifth-grade class. The only other thing I'd like to mention is, we had a successful marshmallow challenge as an elementary school recently. All of our classes rotated into our maker space and engaged in a marshmallow challenge. If you're not familiar with the challenge, the challenge is such that groups have 20 strands of spaghetti, a marshmallow, a yard of masking tape, and a yard of string. And they are charged with 18 minutes of trying to build a structure to keep the marshmallow off the ground. So we approached that really with the vision and the goal of, as we move into next year, really carving out opportunities for kind of isolated problem-solving, collaboration, creative experiences for our students in that space that really build upon a lot of those soft 21st century skills that we've been talking about throughout the year and that are built into our strategic plan and reflect a lot of the shifts in the instruction that are happening in our district. So, that's it.
Thank you.
You got it.
Mr. Arm, drum roll.
As I hinted to a little earlier in the evening, you know, the number of traditions that we continued up, uphold, and then new ones we put in place, I just wanted to highlight something that we tried to do in a really subtle, low-key manner that I think will probably take hold and continue into the future. There was this kind of Facebook forward about a particular district that, just like in our strategic plan, we're charged with leveraging our K-12 experience, you know, whenever, with every opportunity that presents itself. There was a Facebook forward that was very wildly popular for a while about a school where the high school students paraded through the building of the elementary schools in their caps and gowns. And I was, I was pretty nervous at first about proposing that to the students, because you know how, you know, teenagers are, if it's not their idea, then it's definitely not cool. But luckily, we have one thing going in our favor, is that Facebook is no longer for teenagers. So it wasn't on their radar at all, and when I proposed the idea, they embraced it wholeheartedly, and then I was able to easily step out, and it wasn't my idea at all. They, they ran with it, and it kind of spread amongst the senior class, and there was a tremendous amount of enthusiasm and buy-in behind it. And as if our graduation rituals weren't emotionally moving enough, there was not, right, Dr. B., there was not a dry eye in the house as they paraded past the kindergartners, reaching out for high fives, and I don't know whether it was the first or second grade wing, but whatever's on the second floor, third and fourth, they all had signs, you know, "Great job," and, you know, "We'll miss you," and all kinds of things all aligned the hallways. And I think we'll, I think it'll continue, and we'll probably do more to promote it in the future. It's a, it's a nice touch, so I just wanted to share that with you.
And I also...
Thank you, Mr. Harrington and Ms. Sniffin and Dr. Bowers, to be honest, because, you know, I'm, I'm the keeper of the teen culture, right? Like, that's my role. And I was kind of the Debbie Downer, like, "They're never gonna wanna do this," you know? And, and they pushed me, pushed me, pushed me, and it, and it turns out that they were totally on board, and Mr. Harrington and Ms. Sniffin really made it possible, so thanks to them.
And also, congratulations on a wonderful commencement. Mr. Twirney.
You poor people have to listen to me again. I'm sorry. I'd like to thank the Buildings and Grounds Committee. We had a really good year. There's an incredible amount of talent on that committee that really helped me out personally, and I think we got things going in the right direction here. Just, we just started chipping away at a couple of the Buildings and Grounds things. We now have, the fire escape stairs have been fixed by Tino Yanatelli at the Maple Merritt. That, that was big, because a lot of people are using those. As you saw, the parking, that was one of our concerns also with, up there on Cedar Street. So we are chipping away at that stuff, and there's gonna be a lot more done this summer. But I'd like to thank every member of that committee that were all dedicated. It was a very positive experience for me. I'd also like to talk about one particular worker. I like to highlight some of my workers periodically. And Haldane is very fortunate to have this person, Michael Lizikottis. He is so multi-talented. Every day, he just amazes me. Number one, he's more or less an electrician by trade, and second to nobody. He's already put in a couple of dedicated lines for the servers down here, 'cause we worked, just recently, we were having problems with some of the Wi-Fi down on this, on the lower levels. He took care of that problem. A dedicated line now for our cameras. That's fixed all of our problems that way. And then you think, okay, electric, he's fine. Then you go and watch him, and he's a fabricator and a welder. He just fabricated a whole new thing out of steel up by our gas pumps behind the bus garage that's now gonna be used to hang our salter on for the winter. Everybody goes up there and looks and sees this yellow thing, and they're gonna wonder what it is. That's to hang our salter, so we can make room for parking. Okay? After watching him fabricate and weld, then I look at all the plumbing work he, he does around here. And then down at the academy, down at St. Basil, he's just, he's all around a talented handyman. We're very fortunate to have him. And I'd like to also thank the whole Haldane staff for the wonderful job that they did at graduation. It was really nice to see everybody work together. The setup was quick. Everything ran smoothly with, from all the administrators on, and I just would like to thank everybody. It made my life a lot easier. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Not that we're kicking you out.
Sure.
So...
Superintendent's report.
Okay, going into my report. Without, with, Julia is not here this evening, or Chris is not here, because they are at the eighth-grade dinner dance. And I wanna just also share that we had the eighth-grade... Um, and I want to just also share that we had the eighth grade moving up ceremony today. Well attended, very positive experience and Julia should be proud of what it was. So going into my report, a week ago this evening, we had our annual Strategic Plan Committee update. And we had a good showing. We had a lot of people come in. We had what, what was going to be more of a presentation ended up being more of a conversation, which I think was very powerful and it helped people share their thinking and questions. And that will then be rolled into what we're doing in year two. So the, we have all the information that has come to us. I am in the process of writing a cover letter. We're going to have a yearbook of some of our experiences, our deeper learning experiences and our authentic learning experiences that happened K-12 throughout the year. So more than likely, the last week in June, we will be blasting out our first yearbook of our instructional practices. And the concepts and the thoughts from the committee are in the letter there. So that's going to be something that's going to help communicate what, what was shared to the entire community. And we're looking to do that probably three to four times a year so we can keep, we're going to call it the almanac, so we can keep the almanac going and continue to share with parents where we are in our developmental process. We can offer, if, we will have a new communication network on our new website that's Let's Talk that they can ask questions and send information to us and that can be shared within it. So we're good, we're just trying to increase the amount of information that's going out, the amount of knowledge of what's happening here and also increase the ability for them to ask questions. So all of that is happening. So I, I left that meeting feeling good about the understanding of what we're doing and also the understanding of what the community needs. And so over the summer, we're going to be thinking about that and it'll be rolled into next year. So that's the first. You also have six period assignments that were put in your packets today and we realize it's too, too soon for you just to be able to understand and go through it. You may want to take a look at it, but we just wanted to let you know that these are for next year. Brian wanted to make sure that you got them before he left, so if there's any questions with them.
Can you just explain what that means? I looked at it and I thought, I can't, I don't even know what it means to, to make some kind of decision on it. So the sixth period is, most of the teachers teach five periods, is that what it is?
Yep.
So.
And there is a, and they can teach a six. There is, contractually, there's a stipend in the contract that they receive if they teach an additional period. And if we have something, instead of hiring a new teacher, actually, it's a cost savings for the district because if you looked at a salary, a schedule, and divided it by five, it would be less than the stipend that, or excuse me, more than the stipend that would be paying. But most of our teachers will repeat the, the sixth assignment and every once in a while, a new teacher will be pulled in. I think our special educators, you have, every year have a six period assignment. So there's specific requirements. It's contractual and when we have the, the need for it, it's put on the list and it's budgeted.
So how do we read the chart? You know, the, the chart that came on that page where it had the names of the classes and then there was a, a one and a point five or whatever, whatever, and there's X's in it? How are we supposed to read that? I didn't understand.
You may have, you can have a half of a six period assignment, which would be the point five, which would mean that it would be every other day. Um, you can have a full one, six period assignment and it depends on what's needed. So depending on the discipline, whether it's a half of a six period assignment, you can also have a quarter of a six period assignment if it's only a marking period. And so that's, so I'll, I'll show you, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
But it's something that, every year, this is going to be something you'll see every year. And it's something that's put into the budget during the budget season.
Okay. All right. I just didn't know how to read it at all.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So I just wanted you to be aware that they're there. Um, we are having our reorganization meeting, which happens in the first 15 days. It will be held on January 5th at seven o'clock. I will be Skyping in. I will be away, but, yep, July 5th, did I say?
January.
I said January? Oh, excuse me. It's one of those times, you can tell it's almost the end of the school year. So for July 5th, it will be our reorg meeting and I will be Skyping in and everybody else will be here and will be doing the perfunctory requirements of, of adding people to certain lists and certain groups and who will be doing what for the district, which is, it's just a quick and easy meeting. So you're welcome to be there for that. Um, we also have a business meeting on August 16th and we invite you to that. So it's going to be, we won't have a meeting between the 5th of, of July and the 16th of August.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed.
We may actually, that's one of the things, we may actually ask people to get together because we'll be hiring. And if we, if there are people that have to give their notice to school districts, we may ask people to get together earlier. But it could just be five minute meeting, yea or nay, and then you go. Um, and I, we already said our best wishes to Mr. Arm and Ms. Hackett. And we are in the process of hiring for our PPS director and we will, we have our, our principal already on board.
Any questions about any of that? Um, committee minutes, Haldane Arts Booster Club and parking discussion are there for all to see. A note about the Haldane Arts Booster Club, I'll just, I don't remember if I've said this out loud or not, but Katie Bissinger, the current president of the Booster Club is retiring from her presidency this year. Uh, she's served for three years, I think it was, and, uh, I mean, really a remarkable job. She's really taken our arts department and brought it to a new place and does an incredible amount of work. And I know that she's really interested in finding a really great successor and kind of restructuring the Booster Club a little bit so it isn't all on one person's shoulders, which I think is a great idea. So that's, that's in motion. But if anybody is interested in stepping up, knows anybody who would be a really great candidate to step up, reach out to Katie and get in touch.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
So while that's not officially a, a board committee, which we all know, um, we do have a liaison to that committee and that was me this past year. Um, because of work, I wasn't able to attend all of the meetings, but, um, and I think I've said this before, but I'll say it again. I mean, not only did Katie do a tremendous job, um, I mean, there's definitely parents and community members who are there, but the other members of the, of the arts faculty, you know, are there and working so hard. I mean, it just, it, it really is, was really very impressive to see how dedicated, you know, um, all those folks were. So I really appreciated it. And I appreciated getting to see like, gosh, and you know, how much there is behind the scene for all the concerts and the plays and everything like that.
Any communication from the public?
I'm going to speak for myself, I also have to speak for Cory, so.
Speak away.
Speak away. So the first one is, I'm, I'm at the eighth grade dance, chaperoning that. It's a lot of work to get people to dance up there, so it's like, includes, includes like $20 promises and things like that. So I got to get back with some more cash. So both of us, and we're not here for Celia Thomas, and for, the words for me for Celia Thomas is she's such a friend to kids who learn differently and always has been. She's one of the very few people who, when you go to something at the Depot Theater, you know, nine, 10, 11, and 12-year-old boys will jump out of their seats and hug her because of the difference that she made in their lives by really seeing them and believing in them and knowing that, that, that they were something pretty special. And you just really don't come across that very often. She has a true compassionate heart. That is what I feel. And Cory, I think, is chiming in, so here she is. Of course, she wants me to read it. Her son, by the way, has a fever of like 105, that's why. So it says, "A warm, um, a warm thank you in recognition of Celia Thomas, who has been a true friend over the years to children with difference. I have heard many, many stories from fellow parents and Haldane teachers about her work with students over the years, how she so often went the extra mile to assist, support, and befriend kids who are struggling in school. Both of our children have loved her." So, she's talking about, right, thank you, Mrs. Thomas. You will truly be missed. And that is absolutely true. Um, she also wanted to chime in around the garden committee hire, which we're so, um, also the librarian, which we're super excited about too. Awesome. Um, sincere thanks to the board for approving the new librarian, garden educator position in the elementary school for the next school year. This position goes a long way in solving the equity and sustainability issues of garden education at the elementary level. We are grateful to the board for recognizing this and supporting the garden in such an innovative way. So true. That's really a beautiful thing. Thank you for that. Also, um, so it wouldn't be a summer without talking about the Director of Special Services. However, I would like for this to be a much more cordial and lovely summer than last. So, so we would, we're, we would obviously like for you to take great care in the person that you hired. It's unfortunate that we, we really didn't get to know Ellen very well. She was here for one year and we were giving her that year to sort of learn the ropes and understand how Haldane works and what her role was here. And unfortunately, now that the year is over, she has left, so I guess we're not going to get to know her. But I will say that one of the ways in which she was able to improve the process was she was so personable, and this is, this never happened before. It had seemed small, but she returned emails, she made phone calls, she asked if you wanted to go to a training with her. So she was somebody who was really, um, I was actually getting, looking forward to getting to know. I also know that it's a huge, huge job. And when we talk about mentoring somebody, I think now that we're having this alternative high school and we have had all of these issues with this particular position over the years, that we take our time as a community, just like we do with any other position, and really think about who will be great for the job. And I mean, somebody who actually is a mentor to others, somebody who can come in and actually go into the classroom and understand education from a psychological perspective, somebody who can be a resource to the teachers, somebody who is a resource to the children and a resource to the administrators. I, we need a leader in that position and somebody who's not only a leader, but who is kind and personable. It's, it's like Santa Claus. I want Santa Claus, but, um, but somebody who can really make a difference and understand school psychologically. If we're going to have these very two, two very different campuses and the other campus is going to need a whole lot of psychological support. And I know that the school doesn't have a lot of language around that historically. And I would like to see that happen now. And the Learning Differences Committee would really like to be a part of that process in choosing.
So I know that, I've been speaking to Carrie and I'm sure she's also contacted you about having committee members sitting on the committee like we did last year. So we're looking at, at this point, I've been screening for about three weeks and will be hopefully looking either at the end of, not this week, but next week for committees or middle of July. So we'll be letting you know. So I imagine that you're one of the committee members that, that will be coming forward.
Happily. But, and I also want to urge you that, I know that the job was posted for a couple of weeks and that we've already closed it and that you have received the applicants that you're going to receive for that period of time, that if within that applicant pool we do not find somebody who is qualified, that we can be creative in thinking of ways of maybe assigning someone to the, to be an interim person or to do something other than putting the wrong person in the job again. I mean, there have been good things that have happened. We have, you know, the job is now just, it's not just that job, it's a very, very big job, but at least it's not also technology and budgeting or whatever was happening before. So that's a really wonderful thing, but at the same time, what's the rush?
And, and we understand that. So if, if we don't meet our match and it's not, if the district can't nod to one individual and feel very comfortable about it, we'll consider the other options.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Good luck out there.
Get some party starters. Any other communication from the public? Yes, from the board?
No, I'm just going to publicly say that I too will be part of that committee. I didn't respond, but yes, I'm going to as well, as long as it's fitting within the other.
The more than Mary.
Yes? Anybody else? Okay. Yeah. Consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
Uh, we're discussing the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on June 7th. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion, please?
Absolutely.
Second.
Um, any discussion? This is including some reports from last meeting that were tabled, not because of anything that the district did wrong. The board was just overwhelmed in their duties and didn't quite get to reading them. So it includes kind of two, two sections of, two meetings worth of reports. Any discussion? Oh, I want to say, I just wanted to note a thank you to the school foundation. We are approving $60,000 plus of grants and that's a huge thank you to the foundation. It's also a huge thank you to all of the parents and community members that, that donate this money. And it really makes a significant difference for our, our students. So a big thank you to all of those contributors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So on, on here, I see that.
Wait, do you want to ask a question in the, about the personnel?
About the personnel.
So you can ask it, is, we're going to have a second and then I'm going to say discussion.
Got it.
And that's a perfect time to discuss. So I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion, Margaret?
Yes.
Oh, good.
That seems like the wrong order to me, but okay. Um, so on number nine, we're appointing Lauren Haynes for 1516, but it doesn't say we're also appointing her for 1617.
No, and this is just, we're, we neglected to appoint her for this year, but.
Do we, so are we going to appoint her later? So all the others are 1617?
I can't answer that. I'll have to ask Chris.
Okay.
So will you put that down as a question? Thank you.
So just so it doesn't happen again, because all the others are 1617.
Right. So I'm not sure, but I will check with them.
What is the plan for the Ms. Sautner?
So we, um, we also are going to say farewell to Ms. Sautner, who is becoming an assistant principal at the high school level. And we are looking at applicants and we haven't even begun that process, so it was posted today.
Right.
She was approved last night. And so that will be something we're looking for. And we could either look at a one-year leave replacement or, or appointment and then a full hire because it is late.
Right.
Or if we find the right candidate, we could look at the appointment.
Was this something that was known? Like, did the students know about it? Like, or is this going to come as a surprise to a lot of them?
It will come and it, as a surprise to some, but it's been discussed and, and we knew that it was coming. She is also going to be sending an email to the parents of especially 11th graders telling not, you know, fear not that everything will happen as, and don't get worried about the college search process.
Any other questions? There's a lot, lot going on in this personnel agenda. Lots of big, big movements.
Yep.
Do you have a question, Laura?
For the St. Basil's Academy, we initially hired, or were thinking hiring .8, and then we went to 1.
Right. And what happened, we have decided to infuse the math position, the .2 math position. We were going to hire a separate person, and we're infusing it into this position. And there will be another full-time 1.0 that will be on the agenda for next time as well.
Will there be some teaching assistants there, too?
There'll be one teaching assistant, a full-time teaching assistant, and then we have the BOSI CTE teacher who will come and be coming in the afternoon. So we'll have two full-time teachers, a full-time teaching assistant, and the two-hour CTE teacher.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any communication from the public? Going into new business, CSE, CPSE recommendations. Ms. Famulara?
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as submitted.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The approval of the amendments to the Haldane Code of Conduct. This is a review, this isn't, we're not voting on this right now, it's, it's just here for us to, to check out. Does anybody have any questions about anything?
I do.
Yes. For anybody who doesn't know, Margaret Par is the Code of Conduct fixinado.
Well, no, actually, this is, this is not a real Code of Conduct issue, but I see Hallie, Cassie Traynor was put in as one of the student representatives, and I think Cassie and Hallie were both part of it, so I think we need to check and make sure that the right, the right children are given credit for what they have done.
Okay.
Can we just comment on it?
Please.
I was really, I mean, I really liked the tone of all the changes, like, I find it, you know, all the changes that I saw, I, I, I really appreciated. And as minor as this seems, I really liked that there was a really clear, consistent dress code across boys, girls, kids of all gender identities, that it's really clear, it's the same for both or all, and I think enforceable, because it's so clear. And, I don't know, I think that's a good thing. I mean, it makes me sound like so old, but I think...
Listen, I was just on the leg the other day, and I saw some people wearing some things, and I was just like, that can't be okay.
I... Did we enforce these? Well, and that's the important thing, that, and, but that's, I mean, I, I think that's right. My sense is that it hasn't, for whatever's been going on, it may be, whatever's on the books, maybe has been not...
Ambiguous.
Ambiguous. Let's say that.
Interpretable.
But I would really, I would really like to see this, I think it's a really reasonable dress code, I think it's a really fair dress code, and I think it's really so appropriate. And I like the word, at one point, like, it's a professional envi, like, the teachers are expected to treat it as a professional, like, present themselves as they're a professional environment, they're professionals. I just, they're, you know, a, a lot of the language I liked, but I did, that really stood out to me, because it's something I've actually been thinking about for years. So, my thanks to the committee.
Any other questions, thoughts?
And it's still a work in progress, for sure.
Yeah, it's gonna be ongoing.
Right, it was clear that you all kind of had started at the beginning.
It's like, there's probably like sections that you guys decide to focus on.
That's right.
It's like you can't focus on the whole document.
Right.
Yeah.
You're on the committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Although, I can tell you that we've been editing just about all of it, and that we may not have huge shifts in the requirements of it, but yes, it has been edited, and we wanted to make it as concise as we could be.
I appreciated everything that I read.
Yep. So hopefully, it is as concise as it could be at this point, or can be.
Okay, so we'll be voting on that, we just have to make sure we, we've, we have to do it maybe at the reorg meeting? That, that's one of the ones that has to be, like, voted in and, like, approved annually, so I guess we'll probably vote on it at the reorg meeting, I'm assuming. Okay. Any communication from the public? Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations. There will be no action taken in the meeting, but we may be coming out of executive session and taking action. Just a warning, in case anyone wanted to stay. There may be some action taken post-executive session. Okay? May I have a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.